I'd like to call the May 21st, 2019, Meeting of the City Council of Cannon Falls. Call it to order. We could have roll call, please.
Councilmember Bringold?
Here.
Duncan?
Here.
Gesmi?
Here.
Lundell?
Here.
Mattson?
Here.
Montgomery?
Here.
And Mayor Althoff?
Here. Do you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
I'll second.
Most my Derek and second my Bill to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. That leads us to presentations. Is Blaze here yet? Blaze Holden? If not, I think we're gonna start with Jim from the Census Bureau.
He's on the spot now.
Let me introduce this Jim Accruzzo from the U.S. Census Bureau. He was here in January and talked to Linnell and I, and we talked a little bit about the complete countdown, and there's some volunteer positions, both paid and otherwise, and maybe you'd like to make your presentation.
I would. Thank you, Mayor, and everybody. And yes, Mayor was right. I was here in January and presented the same presentation, which is our Community Partnership and Engagement Program to them, and it is all about the 2020 census and creating awareness amongst Cannon Falls residents so that when the questionnaire comes out, when this year it's gonna be a new form, and I'll go into that, they do respond and send it back because it's so very, very important that people do respond at the census. I do want to start off with a welcome from our Regional Director. Regional Director is Marilyn Sanders. This is her fourth census. She's been with the Bureau for 42 years, and I'd like to let you know that she is now over the eight-state Chicago region. If you worked with the Census Bureau in 2010, you would've worked with us out of our old Kansas City Regional Office. Since 2010, the Census Bureau has consolidated from six offices down, or from 12 offices down to six, and the Chicago region now covers the eight states listed there below and shown on this graphic. It is a constitutional mandate that everyone be counted every 10 years per Article 1, Section 2, so residents of all 50 states, Puerto Rico, Washington D.C., and the island areas, plus people of all ages, races, ethnic groups, citizens and non-citizens, must be counted by constitutional mandate, and first census began in 1790. And as I had mentioned, what is at stake is legislative representation, which is determined through apportionment, and also the distribution of $675 billion, which are distributed to the states annually in the out-years after 2020. So right now, you're operating on funds per the 2010 count, and the 2020 count is going to affect funding distribution on an annual basis, beginning in 2021 through 2030. The 2020 census has a flexible design. We have changed some things over from 2010, and we have done so because we have a number of outside influences that we need to be aware of. We've got a much more mobile population than we had in 2010. You have renters who move much quicker than they used to, and they don't have landlines like they used to. So it's an additional challenge for us to locate folks. They move more often. They have mobile phones. You have a constrained fiscal environment, much like you. We're asked to do more with less money, and so we are up to that challenge. There's the rapidly changing use of technology and the information explosion. People are inundated with more and more messaging, and so we need to break through in those areas. You've got the distrusting government folks that don't understand what the census is about and what government organizations are about, so they just naturally don't trust us, and so we need to break through with trusted voices and people that they know to convey the importance of the census. Declining response rates since the '70s, surveys of all type, participation in surveys of all type just in general have been declining. You know, we're, almost everything that we do today, we're asked to complete a survey, and the Census Bureau does operate year-round with many different types of surveys. Not only every 10 years, the decennial census. The decennial census is our foundational survey, but we do a number of different surveys, and we selectively pick people here in the county and in Cannon Falls. So just to let you know that we do have surveys that go on year-round, and there's information in the folders that I handed out to everybody on the ongoing surveys that we have. We have redesigned the 2020 census compared to 2010. We first off establish where to count. We work with cities and we work with county governments to get an accurate address database. We work with the Postal Service and our previous survey information so we know where we can mail out the mailers in 2010, or in April of 2020. And then the Complete Count Committee operates in where we motivate people how to respond, get the positive messages out through trusted voices and Census ambassadors. When we do actually count the population, we do that through a number of different operations. The self-response phase is the actual mailing that's gonna go out, and again, there's a flyer in your folders that talks about that the mailing is gonna go out in five stages to people to respond to the census. If they don't respond to the first mailer, they're gonna get a subsequent follow-up mailer and a subsequent, subsequent, up to five mailings to get them to respond before a census worker will actually knock on their door and ask them to respond or call them. So the goal is to get everyone to respond as early as possible, saving everyone money and getting a complete count early on. We do have another, a couple of other operations: group quarters where we count folks and group living arrangements, senior centers, hospitals, prisons, and the like, the dormitories. We reach out to colleges and college students where they live or reside in their college towns. That's another one of our operations. We have a separate operation as well to count the homeless. And then, like I mentioned, the folks that don't respond, then we have our non-response follow-up operation that begins in April, and that goes through August, where we need to then go out and knock on those doors for folks that don't respond. And then after that, in September through December of 2020, we will be tabulating the data so we can release the results. We need to get the information to the President by December 31st and to Congress by the subsequent March 31st. We've kind of re-engineered our field operations this year, just to let you know that we're relying more on technology and staff productivity tools. We are gonna have a smaller footprint here in the state than we did in 2010. We're only gonna have three area census offices in Rochester, Minneapolis, and Duluth. We're not gonna have area, local census offices like we had around the state, so we're relying more on technology, and more of our workers are gonna be working from home. We will have the area managers and the census field managers that are depicted over on the left. They'll be working out of those area census offices that I mentioned, and those will be opening in the July-August timeframe of this year. We take cybersecurity very seriously. Just to let you know that the Census Bureau is, has been collecting data for quite a long time on mainframe computers. We're now knowing that we're gonna have to be interfacing with folks on their home PCs and on mobile devices, so we have partnerships with a lot of federal leaders and industry solutions, as well as communication plans, crisis communications plans, and an incident response plan in place, so we do take cybersecurity very seriously. All of our computers are encrypted to three levels, so just to let everyone know that they are, their data is safe with us. If there was to be any kind of an incident, we would then work with them with, very closely and very personally, with a registered letter to make sure that their data is safe. We are gonna be hiring around the region, and we are continuing to hiring, and I know the city here has helped us promote the fact that we are hiring. We do have flexible, flexible hour, part-time jobs for our census workers and our census takers, recruiting assistants, and field supervisors and enumerators and takers. The address listers are gonna be going out in August of this year to verify the address list, to make sure the integrity of the address list is in place. And then we're also gonna have office clerks and IT clerks at the area census offices. And all of our jobs are gonna be posted on our new recruiting and assessment website, which is 2020census.gov/jobs. It's different than in the past where we used to ask folks to sit for about a three-hour test. Everything is online. It's about a half-hour test. It's 33 situational judgment and biodata questions. They answer those questions. They fill out the application, and then they go into the recruiting database. In the state, we need to recruit about 40,000 people for the jobs that we'll be hiring for. So again, it's a large recruitment number. We need to build a large pool so that we can, we can staff all of our many operations, which we're just beginning to roll out, and then we'll wrap up in about 16 months. These are some of the key dates that I talked about. We're gonna be opening the area offices beginning in July. The address canvassing is where we're gonna be knocking on doors and verifying the address list. The group quarters, I talked about, the dormitories, the group homes, the jails and the prisons. The self-response period, again, is the end of March where the mailer's gonna go out. And then 2020 of, April 1st of 2020 is Census Day. So we ask everyone, when they fill out their questionnaires, that they do so referencing April 1st. Where do they live or reside on April 1st? How many people live with them in their home, if that is their primary residence? So if they were to fill out their questionnaire in March, or they were to fill it out in May, they're gonna reference April 1st. And then, as I noted, we're gonna do the non-response follow-up and get our counts to the President and Congress on those corresponding dates. So we do work with tribal governments, state governments, county and municipal governments, as part of our partnership program to educate, engage, and encourage everybody to respond for all of the right reasons. We also have our partnership specialists that we're bringing on at an increasing rate right now to reach out to community organizations and to faith-based institutions, schools and colleges, businesses, and the media. Again, any way we can get the message out, it's gonna be to everyone's benefit. So when we do form the Complete Count Committee here in Cannon Falls, we'll just ask for a commitment letter to be sent to the Regional Director. You can have a, pass an ordinance and have a proclamation, but that's not required. But again, then the Mayor, you would appoint, you would appoint the Complete Count Committee. We're looking for engaged citizens to, who have, who are the trusted voices and can be the Census ambassadors. And then once the Complete Count Committee is organized, you put together your own local outreach efforts, and then you work with us as far as any support we can give you, but you provide all the leadership that's needed to get the message out. This graphic is an example of what a Complete Count Committee could look like. Various representatives around the counties, folks from, from your churches, from your schools, from your businesses, the library, health department, clinics and hospitals. Again, this is an example of who can be included because it's an example of the different circles that people live their lives in every day and engage folks with and could get that positive message, which is then gonna be reinforced with our national communications campaign, which is gonna start rolling out in November of this year and go through November of next, of next April. So the Complete Count Committees, again, are gonna use the Census ambassadors and the trusted voices to reach those specific audiences that you may feel may be hard to count. We'd like some help with recruiting for the jobs. Again, we wanna hire locally. We wanna have Cannon Fall residents not calling on Cannon Falls residents, and then we wanna help, you know, engage with either social media or the radio, newspaper, and TV stations that they watch, again, to share, reinforce, and localize the message. You want the message as local as possible so folks can trust that. We do work here with a number of nonprofit agencies around the region, the least not being the Minnesota Council of Nonprofits. We do work with them for the many programs that they need to have funded so they understand the importance of the census, as do many of your residents who may rely on some of the programs that they support. Previous censuses and previous surveys that we've done have indicated that these demographics can be hard to count for their own unique reasons. It's very important that children under five are counted. Many times, they can get, they can be missed for a number of different reasons, so parents need to know that they make, they need to count their smallest children. Students, as I mentioned, college students, we reach them in the college towns and the dormitories where they work through that separate operation, the group quarters operation. We have a special operation to count the homeless. We have the information this year going out to 59, in 59 foreign languages. The paper questionnaire itself is gonna be available in English and Spanish. The online and phone opportunity to fill out your forms is gonna be in 12 additional languages, and then there will be 47 additional languages where census workers can, can reach folks with language guides and the like. You've got the disabled can be hard to count, folks living in poverty. Snowbirds need to know that they need to be counted here in Minnesota, and they need to note that if they're here six months, this is their primary residence, which means they reside here more than six months. They do need to note that they, that they live in Minnesota and not where they may go in the winter months. Seniors and veterans can also be hard to count. So again, we need to, and we have some tools to show you demographically what your city may look like as far as many of these demographics. These are some of the phases that we're working with to get the information out. Right now, we're in the gear-up phase. We're gonna be engaging everybody, again, with the communications plan that's gonna roll out beginning in November, educate everybody beginning next February, encourage them to respond when the mailers are out, remind them, those folks that don't respond, and then we're gonna go back around and thank everybody for their help. And these phases are depicted, again, on a handout that I, a timeline that I gave to everybody, and it's in your folders. Couple of the tools that we have to show participation rates for previous censuses. One is our mail participation rate map, and both of these maps that I'm gonna show you are on our website, which is www.census.gov. Here for, where I was able to pull out Cannon Falls, you'll see that your mail participation rate, 2,000 versus 2010, dropped 3%. So the mailers that went out to Cannon Falls, 3% less people responded, self-responded in 2010 versus 2,000. Do know that we did count those other 14 and 11% with our other operations. We're very confident that we did count 100% of your population, but this is the self-response phase. And on this tool, I just pulled up the city. I can break it down by census tract, and you can even see more, a more localized version. We also have a new tool this year, which is our Response Outreach Area Mapper. This is demographic data based on our American Community Survey, which is our survey that used to be our old long form of the 20, 20 of the 2,000 census. You may remember that there was a long form and a short form in 2,000. We went away from that in 2010 and created only our short form. And here, when you hover over the, a census tract, you'll get all kinds of demographic data. This is very good information for the Complete Count Committee to, to look at demographic information. So for this particular tract of Cannon Falls and Dakota County, you'll see that we had a low response rate of 17% on the American Community Survey. The population in that tract is 4,603, and then there's all the demographic data. Again, that can help with targeting if you wanted to reach out to seniors, to renters, to language, different language constraints. You can use that slider bar there on the side. And this is all demonstrated during the training, or I could do so over the phone if anybody needed additional information on that. So again, in wrapping up, we do understand that we do need to work together so that we can achieve our ultimate goal of counting everyone once and only once, and in the right place, here in Minnesota and here in Cannon Falls. And of course, we will do that through a Complete Count Committee or any other form of commitment that you could give us at this time, which we would appreciate. These are some links on our website where people can get more information on the census, on what the Census Bureau offers, as well as the 2020 census. And this is who I am. I am based in St. Paul. I do have a number of other partnership specialists that we have here in Minnesota. I have two others here with me tonight. So just to let you know that we are hiring and would appreciate any help that you could give us. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
You asked about a complete count city. Is there a deadline for that, or?
For the Complete Count Committee? No, Mayor, no, there isn't. So at any point where you, where you would like to make that decision, you know, of course, the earlier the better, but again, you don't want to get the message out too early, but you wanna be able to have the message out there amongst your, amongst your residents, and then, again, hopefully have a dovetail in what's, what's coming down from the state and what's gonna be coming down from the communications campaign.
I know we've received a lot of literature that we're putting out in the schools and library and city hall here, but it was quite a packet of stuff that we got, so.
And we do. So once you form the committee, we will be happy to supply you with any promotional information to hand out at any parades or events, or in any way where you can help with the awareness. We will help. There's, there's a lot of information up on the website as well, and again, that's all provided in the training, and then, once you form the committee, the way it's set up is the liaison primarily is gonna work with one of us partnership specialists, so we'd be happy to help in that regard.
You mentioned that there's a lot of funding that is sent out based on the census. What are some examples of?
Some of those examples would be roads, hospitals, schools, any type of health care funds. You know, it's very, one point, a good point to make about counting children are a lot of, a lot of the, the healthcare through pediatricians, you know, for those who may be in most need. That's federally funded. So there's, there is, there is a graphic where there, again, in your folder, there's 50, 50 ways census funds are used, but there are a number of different funds.
Okay. I think that's important.
That's a very good question, though. Yeah. So people need to know that, you know, and many times, folks that may be less willing to respond, you know, they may be utilizing some programs that they're not aware of, but they are, they do rely on a population count before those funds can be dispersed. Any kind of FEMA fund is based on population before it's, before it's dispersed, so.
I know you're looking for volunteers, but there are paid volunteers, too. If you go, if they go on the website, they can.
Well, the paid, no, the paid volunteers are the actual jobs, Mayor, so those are the census takers. So those are the ones, those are the ones that would be knocking on the doors, either doing the address canvassing or the non-response follow-up, or we have a couple of other operations. One point I wanted to make, too, that I did not, is that the mailer that's gonna go out is only gonna go to standard postal service addresses that are on the address list. If someone has a post office box, they're not gonna get the mailer, but a census worker's gonna drop off a packet. So that's what we call our update leave or update enumerate operations, and again, we have a number of different operations. So this is, this is the world's largest, or the nation's largest peacetime mobilization, and we ramp up right up until April and May of 2020, and then we ramp back down. We make sure that we count everybody, and that's our goal. And make sure everyone does, is counted only once, so they're not counted at multiple locations.
How many questions are there on the, on the form?
Bill, there will be other be 10 or 11, so it's still to be determined, but.
And just out of curiosity, you know, you've heard on news of, gee, are they gonna ask you if you're a citizen or not? Has that been determined?
That's not been determined. There's not, that's in the courts, but, but whatever is determined, we do, we will make sure that we do count everybody and make sure that we count everybody. That's our goal.
So are there other cities? I mean, what you're looking for is almost every city, or?
Well, we do reach, yes, we do reach out to every city. I can tell you some examples that I, let's see, Red Wing is gonna form a, form a Complete Count Committee. They've already committed. Of course, Minneapolis and St. Paul, Austin, Albert Lee, Winona County is gonna form one, Houston County, so Houston County, Mankato, Laverne, Monavideo, oh, it's just off the top of my head, in my territory, the southern half of the state, so, yeah. But again, if you don't form the committee, we do wanna work with you to work on any other commitment to get, to get the word out again. So it's, so the goal is the Complete Count Committee. We'd appreciate your help in that regard.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Yep, thank you. Yep, thank you. Okay, our second presentation tonight is Blaze Holden from Sustain Natural Fertilizer.
Hello.
Greetings.
My name is Blaze Holden with Sustain Natural Fertilizer. Most of you are probably aware or remember that we were here a year ago about this time to discuss our response to odor emissions from our organic fertilizer manufacturing plant in the industrial park. And so, recently, Mr. Maroni requested that we come back to the meeting tonight. So, I have, you know, some information, a list on things that we've done last year and things that we're working on currently, and so, be happy to share that with you if that's what you're interested in.
Yes.
So, as I mentioned, we met last year, and at that point, we began an extensive process of evaluating our operation and the causes for odor emissions from our facility and looking for opportunities to reduce and eliminate those. It is a difficult task, and unfortunately, there's not one simple answer that we could just pursue, flip a switch, and solve the problem. So, we knew it was going to take considerable investigative work and planning and research. And so, we began with a process of constant improvement. You know, we started by looking at the low-hanging fruit, trying to make as many changes as we can immediately so that we can have a reduction as quick as possible in odor emissions. That was last summer. And so, you know, began by identifying corrective actions and best management practices that we could do immediately. And then, after that, and I'll go through some of those, but after that, we started looking systematically at the whole process. It's not one single factor that causes odor emissions at our facility. There's multiple different factors and conditions that can come into play, and it's somewhat variable. So, we took the approach of trying to look for the root causes and address the problems at the root causes. And now, more recently, or over the past several months, we've hired an engineering firm and a consulting firm to help us look for the bigger project that can substantially improve things long-term. So, and I'll go through some of many of the things that we did and that we have on our plan currently, but we do feel like we've made a lot of progress. We feel like the scope and the impact of the odor is significantly lower than it was at this time last year. Certainly acknowledge that there's still an issue and that there's times when there are odor emissions from the facility, but we do feel like we're making progress, and we do plan to continue to make progress. Last summer, we, you know, started by implementing an improved odor monitoring and complaint follow-up procedure that involved retraining operators and employees to minimize odors and to respond when there are issues. We also hired a dryer engineer who came in and reviewed our entire system last summer looking for ways to reduce odor emissions. We implemented those recommendations provided by the engineer, mostly involved improving airflow in the dryer system to cool the inlet entry point of the dryer to avoid burning materials, as well as installing a heat shield that was intended to separate the heat from the inlet where the material enters the drying system. We tuned and calibrated the burner, and we've also replaced the temperature monitoring probes. We realized we had some problems with inaccurate readings on our temperature probes that contributed to higher temperatures. We also changed how certain materials are processed to avoid burning our odor emissions, as well as stopping to process certain materials in the dryer that we determined had a higher possibility of contributing to odor emissions. We, you know, a large part of what we do is dehydrate compost. So, we have a compost facility, and we dehydrate that in a rotary drum dryer. And so, we hired a composting consultant to look at that process and help us identify ways to improve the composting process to reach further maturity in the compost so that there wouldn't have the odors coming into the system to begin with. And we've implemented several of those changes, including adding additional material to the compost to improve stability and adding additional processes. We also started a research study at Ohio State University looking at composting and ways to, different materials that can be added or used to improve the compost process and reduce odors in the compost. That's currently ongoing. We've, you know, made adjustments to our recipes and the way that we process certain things to try to reduce odor emissions. And then, more recently, we've hired a consulting firm that specializes in industrial odor control. And so, that's kind of what we've done over the past year. Like I said, we feel like it had a big impact on the operation and made some reductions, didn't completely eliminate all odors and all conditions that can lead to odor emissions. So, the next step is to work with the consulting firm and the engineering firm to look at systems to better scrub and filter the exhaust that is coming from our drying operation. So, the intention was to, and is to, try to eliminate as much of the odor at the source as possible so that the amount of odor being emitted from our facility is minimized, and then, at that point, install additional scrubbing and filtration systems to take care of the rest of the problem. So, that's kind of where we're at now. We, like I said, we feel like we made a lot of progress, and I think a lot of the things that we've done are coming online now, and over the last few weeks and months have made improvements. And I think there'll be continued to be improvements over the next few months. And, you know, it's our commitment and our goal to continue to make improvements until we've, you know, sufficiently eliminated the problem. I certainly understand that any incident of odor is unacceptable to some people. And so, you know, regardless of if we've made improvements or not, some people will have still experienced that and obviously, you know, don't want that to continue. And, you know, we're on the same page with the intention of eliminating that from happening. So, that's more or less what I had prepared. You know, I can go into more detail if anybody likes or answer questions.
Well, I guess I will start. I had a gentleman who lives, actually not in the city, but about two miles as the crow flies, and he had mentioned to me that prior to two years ago, he never used to smell sustain.
Okay.
But he does now over the last two years. So, his concern is, you know, whatever you're doing does not appear to be working. And also, I've had a couple of people talk about because of the odor that if they ever go to sell their house, they'll feel obligated to put that out there for any potential buyers, that there may be this odor, and that might reduce property values for some people. So, it's pretty important that you folks are able to control it as best as you can.
Yeah, I understand that. You know, I know that two years ago, we replaced our burner, and I believe that that transition, that changeover process contributed to substantial odor generation, especially last year at this time. And it took quite a while and quite a bit of work to figure that new system out and get the people in here that could make the adjustments and the settings and get it dialed in. So, you know, unfortunately, it doesn't surprise me that somebody mentioned that over the last two years that there's been a problem. I do believe that over the last one year, there has been significant improvements compared to where we were this time last year. I also understand that, you know, it's going to take substantial improvements or elimination of the problem for an extended period of time for that reputation to start to change. It's a lot, you know, one odor event is going to do a lot more to put in people's mind that we generate odors than one month of none. So, you know, we realize we need to eliminate it completely, and we're not quite there yet, but we're still working towards that.
And I've also gotten reports from folks that work closer out in the industrial park, where sometimes if the odor gets so bad that some employees have had to go home sick.
Okay.
That's another complaint that I've received, so.
Yeah. You know, I don't know anything about that. You know, we would certainly take that seriously. We don't experience that with our employees, you know, but we realize, you know, we're the longest-running business in the industrial park. It's changed quite a bit since our facility went up there. You know, our facility went up the same time the Midwest or the Minnesota Container building was being built, and, you know, there's residential houses coming out that way and more businesses and more people. So, it doesn't surprise me that there's been more impact than there was, you know, years ago, and we realize we need to keep up with the times. And if the city's closing in around us, we need to be prepared to be a good neighbor and not cause trouble or, you know, inconveniences for people coming in and out that way.
And I think you hit it on the head. People want, we all want everybody to be a good neighbor, so, and that's, you know, again, your ongoing problem with dealing with this.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we all want to get along, but, you know, you guys got to do something.
I got a question, too. It's, okay, are there other facilities like Sustain around the country or, you know?
Yes and no. I mean, we have a unique operation. There isn't another product the same as ours where people are composting and then processing their compost. There are a lot of companies that pelletized chicken manure. That's obviously very common, and, you know, it's a very stinky operation to do that. It doesn't have the same types of industrial controls that we do, but I think oftentimes it's on a chicken farm where they already have those types of odors. There's lots of barns and that sort of thing. And so, that's part of the challenge with our operation, you know, that our compost facility is owned agricultural, and our processing facility is owned industrial. And so, they had to be separate when it was originally built, and I think that's part of why we ended up in the industrial park as opposed to out in some agricultural land further away from town.
My question is, for lack of a better way to put it, it almost seems like the smell problem depends on which way the wind's blowing or how much that's blowing. Is that the case, or is that just what people perceive to be the case? And if so, there's a two-part question. Can you alter your methods and your practices according to how the wind's blowing? You know, don't do this if the wind's over 10 miles an hour or something.
Yeah, you know, it's a really good question. It's something that we've really struggled with. We know that the weather plays a very substantial role in the conditions there. On certain days, no matter where you go around the facility, you won't be able to detect that there's any odor that the facility's running. In other days, you know, it's quite obvious. It is always, you know, downwind where the problem is. If you're upwind from it, you don't smell it, you know. And, you know, we've worked very hard to try to manage the system based on that. There's some indicators. We have a weather station, and there's some indicators that we can watch that, you know, tell us when it's going to be a more troublesome day or weather conditions. And there's some things that we can do to try to, you know, prepare for that. And we know certain wind directions where, you know, where there's a residential person nearby or something like that. We know that that's going to be a problem. And, you know, we try to plan for that and make adjustments based on that. Having said that, you know, I think with the residential areas moving out that way and more businesses in our, there's not that many directions for the wind to blow where it doesn't affect anybody. So, you know, we want to manage it currently in the best way that we can to minimize any issues, but long-term, we want to come up with solutions that won't depend on the weather and separate but along the same lines that don't depend on operators, you know, from making mistakes because people are human and do make mistakes.
All right. That's fair.
Anybody else? I guess I'm looking at it from the city point of view. There's a lot of expensive residential houses to the southeast, and there's actually been a development kind of been pulled on hold until, you know, see if you can remedy your situation with the odors.
Okay.
I get complaints, and if you've started this last year, it doesn't seem to be working too good. I mean, because there's been some bad days just lately, too, so. But I'd like you to work with your consultants and see what you can come up with to improve it, so. Anybody in the audience that want to say anything? Go ahead.
I am the little.
It'd be nice if she come up. Go ahead, come up to the microphone. We can't hear you otherwise.
I'm the one little holdout out there that has been there before Sustain ever came in. And they promised, and when they went in there, that it would be a nice, clean business, and it has never totally ever been that. And when they were asked to leave, it was, well, we don't have to because you didn't have any rules in the city that we could block them from being out there. We tried petitioning and everything, and it didn't do it. And there are days that I can't even breathe in my house even yet. Now, this is almost 30 years, and we've been promised that this is going to be taken care of soon. Here I am in 2019 after being there since '85, and I'm still having issues. So, what can we hold you to your word this time because it has not been that good in the past?
Yeah, I mean, I understand that. I think that's a fair question and a fair expectation. You know, I don't intend to make a bunch of excuses over the, you know, the past 30 years. It was a new operation when it went in, and the company certainly had its share of challenges and setbacks over the years and lots of things to learn and to figure out about the process. And I think that has limited our ability to find solutions to the problem. But what, you know, I can tell you is that we do understand the severity of it. We do, we do take it very seriously, and we do react every time we find out about a complaint or get notice. And, you know, more importantly, we are committed to, and the current ownership is committed to finding a solution and hiring the necessary experts that can do that for us that we've been unable to do essentially in our first 30 years.
Well, they had said that they would only run during the day when they went in there. And now, you're running 24 hours a day. I can't even have my windows open at night to let any fresh air in.
Yeah, you're correct. We do run 24 hours, five days a week right now. And I, you know, our production has increased over the years. You know, we ran significantly less when we first started. I can't really speak to the initial commitments that were made. I'm not familiar with any of those. All I can do is, you know, try to react to improve the situation as much as I can, as quickly as I can now, you know, with the understanding that, you know, it's not perfect when it has to get done. when it has to get done. Sorry, I didn't catch that.
I said I won't hold my breath.
Oh, lady.
Got a question. And this has always been a question for me. Why was this?
Ma'am, we, we need you to come up to the mic.
It really would help, yeah. Otherwise, we can't hear. Yeah.
I didn't expect to do this, but I'm here for this reason.
And, and could you give the name?
I'm here for this reason. I live across the street. Laura Bremmer, 28860, Highway 20 Boulevard. I'm a good neighbor.
Yes.
Okay, a good neighbor.
Uh-huh.
I always wondered why this facility was placed in a valley to begin with. To me, that is a bad decision as far as the type of facility this is. Nevertheless, there's times when we have to go inside, we run inside because the pollution is so thick, you can't breathe. Uh, you close the windows inside and this land has been there for many years. The Bremmer family has been there for many years before this facility came. Um, and it's awful. I mean, we do have cedar trees that are starting to die off in the woods around us. We're not sure if that's a coincidence or if there is a pollution problem, but it's something to look at. But it is a problem and it's, I agree. It's awful to try and breathe.
Do you think it's getting worse?
Well, I can't see that it's improved. I mean, I appreciate the fact that they're trying. It's good to hear that. But I, me and my husband, we haven't seen any improvement, really. There's still those days that I, you can even see it in the air and run inside and shut the windows and hide because it's so bad. I came here tonight, this is the first council meeting I've come to. I might come to some more, but, you know, this is a reason I came tonight and it's important. I think it really needs to be looked at. Seriously, I know it has a little bit in the past, but a lot more in the future. So, but I do thank you for trying. I do.
Thanks, Laura.
So.
Thank you.
Blaze, how many times do you figure you've been addressing the council regarding this? I know I was able to look up a few.
So, I believe in, um, 2008, we came in.
Okay.
And then, um, and then last year we came in and then this time. And then in 2014, um, I don't remember coming into the city council meeting, but I know there was communication with the city at that time also.
So, I was able to find some of the older stuff and, to be frank, you guys are saying a lot of the same stuff then as you're saying tonight. And, you know, frankly, maybe you're trying, maybe you're not, I don't know. But the people that live around there, they can't be living like this. And, you know, yeah, maybe it's only once a week or once a month, but what if that one weekend is a graduation party or an open house, you know? So, um, something's gotta be done. So.
Yeah, I understand.
It kind of, it kind of, um, mystifies me because a lot of us here are old enough to remember when the Pine Ben Refinery smelled so bad. You know, we'd drive past it for school trips back in the seventies and everyone would just gasp. And now you really can't tell it's there sometimes, a lot of the time. I, I'm just wondering why there isn't some way to scrub the emissions or something and why there aren't some filters that you can put in that would just make things better. It, it really does mystify me why that isn't possible, especially since it's natural stuff.
Sure. I, I mean, honestly, it mystifies me too. I, I thought that there should be simpler solutions. I think, um, some of it comes down to it's, it's not one simple factor and so it's multiple factors, um, coming into play. And so, you know, we're trying to determine what it is that needs to be removed and, and how to do that. Um, you know, and, and we've addressed, we addressed some things and other things continue to be a challenge for us. Um, you know, I'd also say that, you know, we're, we're not the Koch Brothers.
No, I get that.
The refinery is, you know, obviously much different scale than we are and, and resources and all that sort of thing. So, um, you know, maybe if, with enough money, there is the solution that can just be installed. I don't know. We haven't even found, found something that's a million dollars that could solve the problem. But, um, we, you know, have been encouraged by people that we've worked with that feel very confident that it can be solved and, and, you know, we're gonna pursue those.
I mean, I appreciate you're here too, like the rest of us.
Sure.
It's just, it's so frustrating and the phone call, I haven't gotten any yet, but the phone calls that I know some of my brethren up here have gotten have not been pleasant.
Yeah. No, I, I, I understand. I, I wouldn't expect them to be, um, you know, we, we don't like the situation either. It doesn't do us any good. Um, it, it causes us all kinds of trouble also. It's in our best interest, um, to resolve it and, and to stop it. And, you know, our, our employees and, and myself included are under a lot of stress when we're getting the calls too. I mean, no, nobody likes that and, and no one wants to feel like, um, you know, they're ruining someone's day or something like that. And so, um, you know, we do take it very seriously. I understand that, um, the, the problem has persisted and I don't expect, um, the people in our immediate, um, vicinity, uh, really to believe that, that we're making progress and we're working on it. Cause I understand that, you know, one event or something will, will have a major impact on them. Um, but all I can really do is, you know, stay committed to solving the problem and, you know, I, I'll, I can try to be reassuring, but what I need to do is solve the problem. And, and when that happens, then, you know, then these issues will go away. That's really the only way they'll go away. So, um, you know, I tell you honestly and, and the people here honestly that we're committed to it. Um, I do appreciate hearing from, um, the individuals that spoke tonight. I mean, I think it's important for us to hear it. We do appreciate the one individual that lives near us that calls us directly because that gives us the opportunity to respond instantly and, and to identify the problem where, you know, we appreciate it coming from the city, but, you know, there could be a lag and it's a little bit of trying to figure out what happened.
Right.
Whereas when they call us directly, you know, we can do something and we do do something immediately. Um, and it's, it's our intention to solve the problem.
Okay.
Chief, do we, at one time, didn't we buy some detecting stuff that the police were going to so that they could react right faster?
Yeah, and, and the, uh, the city still has that equipment, uh, nasal ranger. Um, Dave, myself and, uh, Tom, uh, were trained on, on its use. Uh, it was also done in conjunction with the equipment that, uh, Sustain had. I believe the same type of equipment.
We do, yeah.
Um, and I'm pretty sure you guys are still using it on a, a pretty regular basis from, you know, what I've seen when you've had some of these incidents, you go out and you're going through the steps.
Right.
Um, you know, for the city, the, the next step from the consultants that, uh, the city had, uh, doing the study, if I recall, uh, was to look at a odor ordinance. Uh, if I recall, Administrator Reeves' reference was at South St. Paul, um, that, uh, had, had put one in, in place. And I don't know if they had, uh, challenges to it or, or not. I wasn't following that aspect of it. But that was never, that step was never initiated by the city. Um, and as such, you know, we haven't used it, uh, the equipment very frequently. When we've had some complaints, you know, occasionally we will pull it out and, and use it. But there wasn't any guidance for us in, in, as far as enforcement to, to do so.
Yeah, we're, we're happy to, to work with the city with ever, whichever route, you know, chooses to go and, um, you know, work with the police department or whoever's involved and, and, you know, obviously cooperate with any ordinances. Uh, you know, we wanna put our resources into solving the problem as opposed to, um, you know, administrative or bureaucratic, um, efforts. And, and the more that, you know, we can use resources to find solutions and eliminate the problem, I think the, the quicker it will be resolved for everybody. Um, but, you know, obviously we, we always wanna cooperate and, and, you know, um, do the best job that we can.
I mean, I can't believe that this is any fun for you either.
It's certainly not, no.
So, you know, anything that can be done to ameliorate the situation has gotta be.
Yeah. You know, and I understand if, if people, they don't, I don't expect them to know our business or to know us personally. And I understand that if the problem keeps happening, they're gonna think, you know, we don't, we're not doing anything about it or for some reason we don't care. And that, that's understandable. Um, I just, you know, I'll reiterate, there's no advantage to us to having odor, you know?
No.
Um, and there's a lot of disadvantages and, and so, you know, we, we fully wanna resolve it and we're not gaining anything by it not getting resolved. So, you know, believe it or not, um, we're all so frustrated that we've been there 30 years and are still dealing with the same, same problem. It's quite discouraging, you know, to, to not have a solution and not have it resolved at this point. Um, I am encouraged, I, I have more confidence right now than I did a year ago that we'll be able to solve the problem based on, um, some of the preliminary, um, investigative work that we've done and some of the engineering recommendations that we've received. Um, but I guess time will tell.
Do you have any, I mean, for the people in the audience, maybe the council members, um, you're talking about your ongoing, your engineering, stuff like that. Do you have anything significant planned this year? Like, this is gonna happen in June, July or August and we hope that after that? I mean, I guess, I guess, the way I see, I'm the new guy into this, but the way I see it is, is there a plan and then is there a date we can meet after that with them, with these people and say, did we see a change or didn't we? You know, or, or are we gonna just wait?
Sure.
A year or two and then visit this the exact same way again and not really get anywhere? I mean, it's.
Yeah, you know, there, there's several things in planning and in the works and that are currently being implemented, um, and, and are gonna be implemented. Um, you know, I, I don't think it's as simple as saying on such and such a date, we're gonna flip the switch or install such and such and the odor problems will go away. Um, but I would be happy to come back here in three months or something like that and give another update about what progress we feel like we've made and what's been accomplished or to hear, you know, from some of the people here or, or different people if they've still, if they've noticed a difference or not. Um, you know, but like I said, you know, we, we just need to commit to solving the problem and eliminating it. And beyond that, we're happy to, to cooperate or, or.
And it's just, I mean, I, I think we owe it, I think we owe it to the people that are here tonight and other people are having this problem that I think we need to put a tighter, a little tighter timeframe on this and try to stay on top of it a little bit better.
Well, also we owe it to them.
Yeah.
You know, to, to hold their feet to the fire and to hold our feet to the fire.
Right.
To, to work on the situation together.
I, I think we all want it to go away. That's, I mean, that's not a, that's obvious. Um, I used to live on the north side of town and
Sure.
I, I dealt with it too. So, um, but that's what, I guess that's my recommendation to council and the mayor is give them a timeframe right now and say, hey, in 90 days, we wanna see you back. We wanna know what you did and we wanna hear from these people. Through, I mean, I'm sure you'll be very willing to call your council members and mayor and let them know what you think's going on over the summer. But that's where I see it going right now is we need to, we need to know what they're up to. And maybe in 30 days, you could give a report and say, this is our plan for the next 60 to 90 days and then we wanna revisit it. Um, we wanna hear from these people that are having the problem and, and, and go from there, you know, later this summer. That's, that's my thoughts, but you just do what you want.
First of all, is there anybody else in the audience that's got a question?
I'm just wondering how, how, how bad it is or how, uh, the percentage of time that it, like to have a barometer when it will be.
That's a good question. I think it, it, it varied so much over the years and it's so, it's a personal thing too. I mean, what bothers me a lot may not bother Derek as much or, you know, so it's, and it's a whole different thing to be living 100 yards from the place or whatever and, or driving past it or something or hearing about it.
What's the, is there a range? Like, does it happen?
That'd be a good question for him.
Percent of the time, 50% or, you know, 90%? It sounds like it's every day, but it's not, I don't think.
It isn't every day. But it's, I mean, I don't know.
Well, can you pull a number, a range from so much 30 to 50?
I know what you're getting at. I'm just not sure if he's got that kinda data.
Yeah, you know, it's difficult for, for me to say, you know, I, I personally patrol it daily.
I've lived here 28 years. I've never, oh, just driving by.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. You know, um, there's one individual mentioned, it's when you're downwind of it and then it's, it's under certain weather conditions and, and processing conditions.
I realize it varies.
So, there's some days when, when you can be downwind of it and not smell it and there's other days when, um, when you definitely can smell it. And, you know, we've had some process issues that, as somebody mentioned, you can actually see it and, and there is a haze. Um, and then that's obviously when they're, they're substantial. But, you know, it's, it's very difficult for me to, to give a number that I am confident and I, I agree it depends on the person. And it's also the time of day and, you know, how long was it? Was it all day? Was it momentary? Um, you know, a year ago, I, I met a gentleman, um, down near, um, Senex and he mentioned that the city asked him to monitor the odor levels and he made a comment. And so, he said he would drive around our facility every day. And he made a comment that in April, um, it was something like 25 out of the 30 days, um, last year. And, you know, we, we had a substantial problem at that time and I, I don't deny that. Um, I can tell you now that it's nowhere near 25 days this past April that the problem is there. It's, it's substantially down. But I also realize that if you smell it once or you smell it 10 minutes for a day, you know, every day or whatever it is, that's, you know, unacceptable to those people. And, and so I don't know how to answer, you know, with a firm number. I would love to have the same number you did. Cause we, we talked about the same thing, like how do we quantify this and track it to, to know if we're doing, doing better or not. And, you know, it, it's been difficult, difficult for us to track. I, I, you know, we made substantial changes last May and had a big stretch of, of no issues. And, um, you know, I met the same individual at, in June and I asked him, and I said, you know, we made substantial changes and do you still notice the odor? And he said, oh, well, I stopped paying attention. And so, you know, people don't necessarily wanna admit when the, when they don't smell it, you know, but they, they, he did point it out when he did. So, I, it's hard for us to quantify.
Excuse me, excuse me. Can you come to the mic?
I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, yeah, that's helpful.
Sounds like it won't be completely odor free, but, but really it's.
I mean, our, our goal is completely odor free, you know, at, off of our property that, that you can't smell it. I, I know that it's possible under a lot of conditions and I, and I hope it's possible under every, every condition.
Sure hope that happens for the city.
I agree, yeah.
Appreciate your answer.
Well, I guess, um, I'd like to, uh, make a motion that we revisit this, uh, say the first of September, our first council meeting. Have you come back, see what you have done?
Mm-hmm.
And be able to report to us and the public. Uh, hopefully there'll be some changes. That gives you a little over three months.
Yeah.
Um, so, that, that's my motion.
I second that.
Okay, there's been a motion by Bill and a second by Mary Jill to revisit the Sustain. Have Blaze come to our first meeting in September to see what progress has been made. Is there any discussion on that?
Uh, when we ask for progress, uh, would that, could we request something like readings from this nasal ranger so we can see maybe what the baseline is now to what the, cause how do, how do you measure progress?
Right.
Other than residents saying, oh, it's a little bit better. Uh, so how do we, how do we measure that?
That's a good point, yeah.
How do you measure it?
So, the purpose of the nasal ranger is to quantify the intensity of the odor. So, it, you, you use dilution and when you can no longer smell it, it gives you a number.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, it, it could be a combination of the nasal ranger reading, the olfactometer reading and, you know, uh, frequency or something, you know?
Do you, also do you log your, the complaints you get?
We do, yes.
So, you have like a trouble line or you know when people are calling for?
Yeah, so we, we have a, a hotline that people can call. Um, that was set up for after hours. So, if we're operating when the office is closed, somebody can call that and we receive a message and can, um, notify the operators that there's a problem. Um, so we have that line and then, you know, um, one individual calls us directly at the plant or, or two, I should say.
Mm-hmm.
And then most.
Mm-hmm.
And then most of the notifications come from Lanell or Dave, um, by email.
Could you share that number? I believe we have members in the audience that would like to have that number.
The number of complaints that we...
No, the, the phone number.
Oh, the phone number. You certainly can do that, yeah, sure, yep. I will, I'll pull that up, uh,
Okay.
Before I leave here.
What do you think would be a fair, um, way to get a base, um, rating, like, like you were saying?
Uh, I mean, I think it's a really good question, it's really important, it's something that we wish we had a better handle on. Um, you know, you know, I, I think the nasal ranger is a fine idea, that comes down to having somebody available to, uh, to do it. You know, we'd be happy to, I don't know if you guys want us to do it or not, but we, we can do it, or, you know, if there's other city staff that's willing to do it, or...
You have to start somewhere.
Something.
Yeah, you gotta start somewhere.
Well, Jeff, we have the, we have that nasal ranger...
nasal ranger, what?
Right?
Yes.
Could we send someone out
Ozometer.
On a regular basis, just to get a...
Yeah, if we're gonna be, uh, be looking at, at doing something like that, we'd probably wanna get, uh, um, some refresher training, uh, from the manufacturer, consultant, whoever, you know? To make sure we're, they've been doing it, you know, pretty consistently, um, Dave and I haven't.
But I, but I would like to see...
And then the other part would be, is we may have to ensure that the, uh, the razor, nasal razor we have is, you know, calibrated.
Right.
Don't know what needs to be done.
We wanna be doing apples and apples.
But it'd be nice to have what we have, and then Blaze and his folks...
Honestly, when we were doing it with the consultants, uh, Blazer, his people were out pretty much at the same time, and everybody's coming up with pretty much the same results.
Okay.
Um, you know, we found it to be very accurate.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in identifying the type of odor, the, you know, the ratio of, you know, um, the odor, as far as, you know, microns and stuff.
Because I, I think for the sake of the neighbors, too, it's nice to have some numbers put to this stuff? So, it doesn't just, it smelled bad yesterday?
Hmm. Yeah, that, you know, everybody has different levels of sense of smell, and so, you know, there may be differences in, um, readings from the nasal ranger, from person to person, but I think the important thing is, you know, establishing a baseline.
Absolutely.
As someone mentioned, and then, you know, how it changes from there, as opposed to...
Okay.
And then, you know, I don't know if they recommended the same person do it every time, or...
Uh, what they, they recommended was, you know, just, don't send different people every time. You have, like, we had three people.
Sure, yep.
Um, and then you're, the log sheet for it, you know,
Indicates who...
Records the weather, and who did it, and, you know, all that stuff. So, in theory, it, person to person, the same person's results should be fairly consistent. There may be some variables, as, as, you know, Blaze indicated. Um, I guess my question to council would be, you know, there may be some cost to having, you know, the, the instrument done, and, and some updated, um, refresher training. Is that something that you want just to just go ahead and get done? Or is it, do you want us to get figures, and bring it back to council for action?
Well, if we, uh, pass and say that, uh, it's not till September, we do have time to revisit that, to see what the training would cost, and if we're...
Yeah, I mean, if you're comfortable with, with, you know, whatever their, their numbers are, and I honestly would not have reason to doubt,
No.
Um, you know, their ability to, to do it, because they've been doing it consistently since then, um, that, uh, you know, you're gonna have a pretty, pretty accurate, uh...
I'd like to see you...
We certainly could work with the consultants, and get that information for you by the time we come back in September.
Mm-hmm.
And then you can decide if you wanna, you know, move forward with more monitoring by the city.
Maybe by the next meeting, you could look into it and see
Yep, I can do that, too.
This what we need to do, and
Yep.
It's gonna cost tax, and, because we, we need to start, you know, it isn't just, we don't wanna just be yelling at you.
If that's what crosses wishes, I'll, I'll go forward and get you those numbers before the next meeting.
Great.
Okay.
We gotta vote.
Yeah, did we pass the...
We haven't.
You haven't. You're in the discussion phase.
Okay.
Do we wanna put the, Bill, do you wanna put the caveat that, or should that be a separate motion, that, that, or can we just direct staff to that?
Well, no, we can add the motion that Jeff bring forward, the numbers are our next meeting.
Yeah, you've already directed it as a, as a body, so we'll move forward with that. I don't think you need to take a formal action, but you will get a formal action once we have that.
Okay.
Okay, again, the motion's been made by Bill on the second, Mary Jill, to revisit this September first, but also, um, what should I say?
Look into our own monitoring.
Look into our own monitoring, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
By the next meeting. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Good.
Thanks, Blaze, for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the council agenda. The council agenda items may be deleted, or may be adopted under one motion as presented, or may be removed for discussion and resolution as council business. For you in the audience and at home, I'll go through the council consent agenda. Item A, just and correct claims for the accounting period ending May fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Item B, the minute meetings for May seventh, two thousand and nineteen, city council meeting. Item C, approve a contract with SEDA for professional services, project number two, the data center site certification. Item D, resolution twenty-four, twenty-six, vacating part of Coville Street in the city of Cannon Falls. Item E, hiring of pool employees and wages for the two thousand and nineteenth season. Item F, Invenergy Sewer Credit. And item G, sale of a John Deere lawnmower. Is there anything the council would like to bring down?
I don't wanna bring it down, but it is a, a never-ending source of frustration, that Coville is spilled wrong. There's no E on the hand of Coville.
No, we in Coville.
Just, no.
There isn't?
No. Colonel Coville's name is, there's no E. But it's done wrong about half the time.
Anything?
That's all.
A motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Bill on the second, by Steve, to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Council business? None? That brings us to item eight, reports. The council committee commission. Dave, is that you?
I don't have anything for Public Works, but I could speak to the planning commission, if you'd like review on that.
Hey, sure.
Uh, some of you know, the planning commission did hold a public hearing, uh, as requested by the property owner and developer to rezone, uh, four lots in, uh, the east side of town, and property owned by Glenn Mulvahill. At the public hearing, there was some concern about the developer's proposal, and a pretty good conversation between the, uh, planning commission members themselves, and the public, and the, and the developer. And, uh, the committee, commission did vote, uh, to recommend the rezoning to the city council. It's not before you tonight, because, uh, following the planning commission meeting, uh, I heard several additional comments from, uh, adjacent property owners, uh, excuse me, adjacent property owners, the developer, and the owner of the property, who was proposing to sell the property for the project. And we decided, pending some further conversations between the buyer, seller, seller, buyer, that we would hold off bringing the planning commission recommendation to you, uh, until some of those issues are addressed. So, possibly at the next meeting, or, or maybe not even until, uh, the second meeting in June. But, uh, the recommendation was made, and we'll wait another couple weeks here to see if some of these issues can get addressed.
Very good. Okay, reports. Mike? Chief? Dave? Steve?
Nothing.
Yeah?
I'll be brief, uh, park board on our agenda. Um, we did unanimously pass the destruction of the concession stand that, uh, has not been used for years, so there's that. Uh, also, we wanted to talk about Veterans Memorial Park, and here's my, my question there. We've talked about maybe changing the parking lot a little bit, but we also ran into an issue that we didn't know, there's so many different groups that have involvement with Veterans Park, that there was some lighting issues. Uh, I don't know if you can speak to that, or if...
We went there, and there were suddenly lights that nobody seemed to know
Right.
Who approved them, or...
Right, and that's, uh, you know, there's, I'm not saying there's too many cooks in the kitchen, and, or that the park board is, uh, were just an advisory council, but these are things that we'd like to know about. So, if it went through you, great, but if it went through a different group, and it was done on the public property, that's an issue, and we're gonna have to reestablish that things go through the right channels before they get done.
I, I found out about it when you guys did, or the next day.
And that's the problem.
Yeah, and that's the problem.
And that's the problem.
Therein lies the problem.
Um, so we love that people are involved, and we love that park, but when it comes to things like lighting, and where things are put, because that affects the mowing, our plans are sitting here talking about the parking, which would also affect snowplowing, uh, so things have to go through the right avenues, and the right channels, uh, to try to get things done.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, also, uh, we're unofficially calling it Mayo Park, but the, the park on the west side of town, right behind the church on Dow Street there, it looks like we have a timeline loosely in place, uh, that's both park board and public works. Uh, so maybe midsummer, late summer, early fall? So, there's reason to be excited about that.
Phil?
Okay, uh, yeah. The, uh, Public Works met, uh, on the thirteenth of this month. Uh, we, we had a lot of people there that night. Uh, one of the items was on the consent agenda tonight, that we, uh, dealt with the, uh, Invenergy Sewer Credit. Uh, also, we had one issue with an alley where we're having semis, uh, coming through, and, uh, creating a problem there, so we're gonna post it against, uh, semis going through there. Um, and due to the fact that the, uh, uh, conference room is, is, uh, pretty small, and we seem to be getting, uh, and it's a good thing, we get a lot of people to come now, we're gonna move future, um, public works meetings to into the council chambers here, starting next month, so, uh, give everybody a little more...
Aren't the meetings the same night as planning commission?
No, no, it's, uh, we, uh, we scheduled for June eleventh,
Oh, okay.
Which is a Tuesday night. We, we took that into account, so, uh, uh, other than that, I think I'm done. Okay, Derek?
Nothing for me.
Mary Jill?
Nothing for me.
Seth Morris? Okay, that brings us to public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the record, and kindly limit your comments to three minutes. Public comments must be respectful, pertinent to city business, and adhere to applicable data privacy rules. The city council will not take action on any issue raised by the public, but may choose to schedule consideration of the item on a future agenda. Is there anybody who'd like to talk on public input?
I think it was kinda cool, this census presentation. Well, what about maybe getting the League of Minnesota Cities to come in, and give you guys a presentation about your charter and your ordinances, that you have clearly been in violation of for seven years now, and you've ignored CO Johnson and me, and for some reason, you refuse to adhere to your own rules? It seems odd to me. We did find out that the city attorney has given his opinion, I'm about to get it in writing, that he doesn't have to do his job, because he says so, even though you paid him in good faith. So, anyway, after I went to Phoenix, Arizona this winter, Bill Duncan made some claims that were less inaccurate. He claims that I threatened him, for one thing, which seems odd, but he claims that I called Mike Elthoff in excess of ten times a day. Well, that's not true, and the fact is, I can call Mike as often as I want to, there's not a damn thing you can do about it. I can order Mike around. There's nothing you could do about that. I can direct him to do whatever it is I feel like directing him to do. There's nothing you can do about that. But there is a law that says that you, Bill Duncan, cannot direct him to do anything, because you're a council member, and you do not have that authority, and there is a law that covers that. You claim that I called Jeff McCormick a lot. The fact is, I've talked to Jeff McCormick once in six months. He called me, by the way, that particular time. I have not talked to him since, I have not sent him a letter. Yet our local newspaper claims that I wrote him a letter. Now, I know you didn't say that, but the paper says it, and the chief has never corrected that. The chief apparently doesn't wanna discuss it with the administrator, he doesn't wanna discuss it with me, he doesn't wanna discuss, discuss it with the mayor. Seems real odd to me. Well, I'm glad he showed up tonight. McCormick apparently told Bill Duncan, if I show up on your doorstep, meaning anybody, dial nine-one-one, we'll have him arrested. Well, I'd like to know what you're gonna arrest me for. Now, Bill, you did call the police, had somebody else call the police, to a public works meeting. How'd that work out for you, Bill? And that's part of the charter that I'm talking about. You are not the chairman of the public works. It says so, it's in writing, it's a fact. You shall be elected at the first meeting, and you weren't. Therefore, you're not, just so we get the facts straight. I'd like some answers to these questions, now that we finally have the chief of police here, and we have Bill Duncan here. What was said? I'd like to know. Maybe you could give it to me in writing, I'd really like that. Thank you for your time.
Tim Deemer, that's my address and way to contact me, it's on file. I'll just repeat here what was said about public input. Public comments must be respectful, and pertinent. I completely appreciate the, 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 what is presented, how, um, trying to think of the clarity, or to make things clear, but it, but how it's spoken, I don't, I don't feel it could, it could be much more civil. The, the tone, the, the way people talk, I just, so I just found this, like, I got this book about meditations for working through whatever, healing after. And for today's date, May twenty-first, it says, was this one sentence, it kind of, stand still, this is how I feel, I'll, um, choose to be, or not, not exactly what I, uh, feel is necessary, but stand still, and it says some other things, for a moment, and say your last words in silence. That's, you know, I'm not a, wanting to sound preachy, or religi, or any of that, just this famous person, uh, if we can think about it in the lyrical imagery, is what it says down below, of this person that wrote that, Tagore, Rab, I can't even pronounce his first name, but, they belong first. So, I'm just also, some quotes from, I've been timing here, I spoke two minutes, so, just in the last minute, I'd just like to say some quotes that come to mind from previous council meetings. I don't know which one to start with, or what to, but, uh, a previous council member said from, from the audience about, well, there's probably three that come to mind, but the, the one that he said was about making something from a molehill into a mountain. Well, to me, even a molehill can be, you trip over it, and they make these trails, they push up the ground, even a molehill can be something that, um, can, can cause issues. And I'm, I'm still looking for some resolution, some mediation, and talking about things from, I don't know, personnel committee board, and different public play at the library and such, and, um, just what, um, I don't know, you don't want me mentioning names, but it was spoken the first meeting of the year, about the word shambles, was this, the city's, or, he, he's on the committee because he feels this town, it was written in the paper, so I don't know if he believed that or not, but it's on tape, too, I guess, you You know, I, I looked at it, I looked at, or looked it up and watched it. So, being in shambles, problems happening, some other council mentioning that, you know, trouble. And a, and a previous, like, I won't mention names, but I'm pretty sure you'll know who it, the Public Works director coming in, giving his three minutes worth about, you know, sticking his finger and pointing out people and this and that. I, I just wish for answers.
Thank you. Oops.
Good evening, council and community. I'll be fairly quick tonight. If Mr. Mike Elthoff could order nicer weather in the next couple of days, we have 43 beautiful baskets of flowers that would like to be hung up on Mill Street and on Fourth Street and Highway 19. And so they are ready to go as soon as everything warms up. I would also want to welcome everyone. June 13th is our next Fun Fest, and we are getting a lot more new vendors signing up. So it's going to be fun to see what we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle.
Okay, since I'm here, my first council meeting. Okay, Laura Bremer, 28860, Highway 20 Boulevard.
I thought what you said last time.
I did, but I thought I had to do it again. Okay, anyway, being a driver for seniors with disabilities, I have noticed we need to get on those handicap parking areas. They really are rough for these people with walkers. So I just thought I'd mention it, since I'm here. I notice it a lot, and it needs to be addressed, I think, especially on Mill Street. But there's other spots, too. So I'm just going to say that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else, public input? Final call, pub, go ahead.
There was a request for the phone number, caller calling. I looked that up while I was sitting there. So do you want me just to read it off here?
Yeah, please.
It is 651-347-1827. 651-347-1827.
Very good. Thanks, Blaze.
Thank you.
Okay, I just want to mention Memorial Day weekend, parade at 10:30 and the ceremony at the cemetery at 11 o'clock. Anybody got anything else? Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Bill and a second by Morris to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried.